I would like to fill this meeting of the District Ninety Seven Board of Education. The quarter today is August tenth, twenty twenty one, and this time is seven oh nine P M. Roll call, please.
Kearney.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Here.
Moore. Absent. Duffy.
Here.
Ross Driven.
Here.
Heard Johnson.
It looks like she's a participant.
Okay. And Kim is.
I'm an attendee.
Okay, meeting called to order at seven ten P M.
All right, first up on the agenda is the introduction of new staff. This is agenda item three.
Is there if I just start or does somebody want to kick us off?
We want to welcome our new staff. There's quite a few new staff members at this time. And Oak Park is a short time that I've been in the district. It's a wonderful district, really. The focus is on children and that's why we're all here. So thank you for committing to District Ninety Seven. And we look forward to working with you through the year. And Dr. Paul and I, our door is always open. You want to stop by, have any questions, or just to say hi. So welcome to our district. And Amanda put together a little bit of a video to share.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank all of our new staff and welcome them to the district. We appreciate all of your efforts on behalf of our students and we look forward to all the great work that you do. Thank you. Next up is agenda item four. We have public comment and board member Spurlock.
Hello, public comment from Mara Boss. Dear District Ninety Seven Board and superintendents, I'm writing today with questions and concerns about the district's surveillance testing plan. I'm very much in favor of layered mitigations to help limit spread of COVID within our schools, especially with the more contagious variant circulating this school year. This includes surveillance testing. That being said, parents have been asked to determine whether to opt out of surveillance testing without knowing the specifics of testing policies and procedures. The shield test has a ninety-nine percent specificity. This means that one percent of people tested who are actually negative for COVID nineteen will still test positive. In a population of fifty-eight hundred students being tested weekly, this could potentially result in many false positives of quarantines, both for the students who test positive and their close contacts at school and at home. From my communications with the district thus far, I've only been able to determine that the health department will decide how long these students must quarantine. There is no formal policy in place for how confirmatory testing will be handled. If a asymptomatic student has a negative nasopharyngeal PCR test, then twenty-four hours of their positive shield, would they be allowed to return to school? What about two negative tests? Would they be required to quarantine a full ten to fourteen days, no matter what confirmatory testing shows? Is there any testing that would be adequate to demonstrate the original test was a false positive? How long would a sibling of a student test positive be required to quarantine? That could be twenty, twenty-eight days if they're required to stay home from the end of their siblings quarantine, and then an additional ten to fourteen days from their last exposure to someone who's considered contagious. The district should have transparent policies in place for these situations before the opt-out deadline. So parents can make informed decisions about surveillance testing. Please consider publishing a more detailed policy and extending the opt-out deadline for testing. Thank, thank all of you for your consideration of this matter for continued hard work preparing for this school year. Gail Galvin. An alternative method is preferred strongly because nothing is for free, including these services for tracking and tracing. Thank you, Gail Galvin. Dear board, hey, please request any PCR type test to have a couple clue threshold under twenty for more accurate results or more accurate type of testing considering the number of people affected by one test result. Also, please consider this request for details and for privacy regarding Crisis Go or Go Crisis or any such collection of data, testing of DNA samples, et cetera. So far, there's no information about long-term safety and privacy with respect to sales, storage, transfer of ownership, et cetera issues. For example, please be aware of New York Teachers for Choice FOIA information. Conflicts of interest. Unfolded genetics was announced as one of the labs being used for New York City in school COVID testing. Took me just a few minutes searching to find a two thousand seventeen S E C filing which stated Folgen owned a proprietary library of genetic information. This led me to question whether my specimen would, which contained my DNA was protected or a full job would be allowed to catalog and profit from my DNA. Neither my union nor my employer, New York City D O E, would answer that question. That forced me into a group of teachers and parents to retain a lawyer, eventually sued the D O E and was able to obtain a stipulation in court, ensuring our specimens were completely protected and would be destroyed. Just as a follow-up to that, last year, we got a question about Go Crisis and Crisis Go, and we are using the service that it's not affiliated with. Well, when we were using the service that was not affiliated with some of the issues that were raised by the other service.
Next up on the agenda is item five, action items. There is a consent agenda, but is there anything on the consensus that should come off? Hearing non-adjournments regarding this.
I move the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Kim. Absent. Moore. Absent. Duffy.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up is agenda item five point two, personnel approval for level three grievance answer. Are there, are there any questions about that?
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District Ninety Seven moves to approve board level three grievance answer in response to O B T A grievance stated April ninth, twenty twenty one.
Duffy.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Kim. Absent. Kearney.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Moore. Absent. Motion pass.
Next up, we have a few items for discussion and action. This is for the item five point three. We'll start with five point three point one, which is authorization to publish this will be a twenty-two budget.
Good evening, Board of, good evening, Board of Education. So this item, this item of the agenda is for the board to approve the notice calling the public hearing for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And at that meeting, the board will prove the final budget later on in the budget, excuse me, later on in the meeting, I'll be presenting the tentative budget.
Moving along. Oh, motion five point three point one.
I move the Board of Education of Oak Park School District Ninety Seven authorize the placement in the newspaper of the notice for budget hearing to be held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one for the tentative budget to be displayed at the district for a minimum of thirty days prior to the adoption of the final budget.
Kim. Absent. Spurlock. Duffy. Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Moore. Absent. Ross Driven.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up is agenda item five point two, approval of compensation for lunchroom playground and substitute custodians personnel.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you wish before approval of this. You had received the update in your board update previously in regards to the additional cost if the board went ahead and moved this year to the fifteen dollars per hour for lunchroom worker one and substitute custodians. And you and playground supervisors, the lunchroom worker two was always compensated in the past for past practice and dollar an hour more because they have supervisory duties over top the lunchroom worker one when the lunchroom supervisor is not there. Lunchroom supervisor is not included in this proposal because they are already compensated eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents per hour. So the additional, the rough additional cost, as you saw on the previous document shared with you in a board update, was roughly around seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. That's only if we would use all five of those sub custodians every single day. More than happy to answer any further questions.
Second.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Moore. Absent. Kearney.
Yes.
Kim. Absent. Motion pass.
All right, and last one, we have our discussion action items with item five point three point three. Approval daily rate increase for permanent substitute teachers for the twenty-four one, twenty twenty-two year. Any discussion on this item before moving forward?
Yes, I'd like to leave that if possible, so the board can direct any questions before moving forward on this. In, in June, it's my, what was shared with me was the Board of Education approved a hundred and fifty-dollar daily rate for permanent subs. And that was a reduction from thirty dollars a day. Last year, we Oak Park hired permanent subs at a hundred and eighty dollars a day, offered some minimal benefits at which only two of those permanent subs took advantage of that. We are struggling in our human resource department to hire the twenty-six permanent subs that the board approved to hire for this year. Currently, we only have been able to hire ten out of that twenty-six. Some of the reasoning that's coming back to us when our staff has been contacting previous permanent subs, is they're not pleased with the reduction of thirty dollars a day in the daily rate? And they're able to take on a long-term substitute position, which is currently at a hundred and eighty dollars. So they prefer the long term or they've looked elsewhere. So we are coming back to you tonight to request at least movement back to that a hundred and eighty days so we can secure these positions, these twenty-six positions for this upcoming school year. We would also like the board to consider, being that we're hearing other districts are moving their daily rate to one eighty-five, we would also like the board to consider some flexibility of the administration to cap that daily rate at two hundred to make sure that we can fill these positions. The other aspect of these permanent substitute positions, Board of Education, is that this expense can be totally part of our S R three grant, meaning that it's not something we have to look at sustaining long term. This is a unique year again, unfortunately, like we had last year in public education. These permanent subs will report the education on a daily basis of our quarantine students. They are very important to our district, and so that is why we're putting the high value on them. And again, it will, the expense would be covered through the S R three grant, which would help support the longevity throughout this year of that extra cost. More than happy to honor any questions.
Just to clarify for those that may not understand from the public, the S R three grant are COVID dollars. It's actually going to come from the federal government. Correct?
Those are, that would be the federal, those would be federal dollars, yes.
Any questions about this item?
So you're asking for an amended motion that would actually give you up to two hundred dollars, is that correct, per person, just to make sure we can fill those positions?
That is correct. We would first go out of the gate at a hundred and eighty if we still feel that, if we still are not filling them, it would give us the flexibility to go higher if we needed to. Yes, that is correct.
If I could jump in just for a second.
At the table, I'll, we can change.
Yeah, we've had, we've had discussions on this. Our staff reached out and found out one eighty was a lot more palatable, but we anticipate the shortage. We now have eleven permanent subs, so we're still looking for fifteen. We anticipate other districts will start to, if history repeats itself from last year, we'll start to see these things creep up. And so that flexibility piece, while we don't want to go there, if we find that that is something that can get us over the top for the year, not knowing how we're going to be utilizing all of our permanent subs, we'd like to have a full stable in the beginning, and that this might, this might help us.
And going back again to prior conversations, this is in place because we were having difficulties finding substitutes on a non-permanent basis. Is that correct?
Well, it's also how we're going to execute on the remote learning plan, though.
Yep. These, these permanent subs will be utilized for quarantining students, and so they're going to have that tech component to them. And it's, it's a very different type of position than traditional teaching. And so there's huge teaching strategies involved, but there's also ancillary things that we're going to be expecting of these folks.
Right, including managing multiple grades in a single day.
Yep, that is correct.
Any other questions? If not, all in your opinion, motion.
All right. We're gonna amend the motion at the table, and board member Ross Driven is gonna read the amended motion.
Thank you.
All right, I motion that the Board of Education of Oak Park School District Ninety Seven moves to approve the amended motion permanent substitute daily rate increase from one fifty to one eighty, or if needed, not to exceed two hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second.
Okay, Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Kim. Absent. Moore. Absent. Kearney. Ross Driven.
Yes.
Amended motion pass.
Thank you for approving that. It is a sense of urgency for us. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item six. We will, special reports, we will start with a back-to-school update.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to welcome to our panelist, Dr. Chapo. Are you with us? She is going to be joining us. There she is. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. We very much appreciate that. And we'd also like to welcome Larry and Hannah, who are the co-presidents of the Oak Park Teachers Association. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Larry, are you with us?
I am, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna begin our back-to-school presentation with Larry and Hannah.
All right, great. Hannah and I have been in discussions and we, we thank you for allowing us to have a seat at the table as we once again head into this challenging school year. We have begun open and honest conversations that have been truly collaborative with everyone, and the decisions we have come to will be in the best interest of the students that we serve. I want to give a quick hello and welcome to our newest District Ninety Seven teachers, as I know some of you are here with us tonight. We can't wait to start working with you. Please reach out to me or Hannah if you need anything. We look forward to meeting with you a little more closely next week. Congratulations and best wishes on a fabulous school year. Over the last few months, the Oak Park Teachers Association, the Board of Education of District Ninety Seven, as well as District Ninety Seven Administration, have been collaborating on our back-to-school plan, as well as what our school year might look like for students and families. We are excited to be working with everyone as we continue to make this school year the best for our students, their families, our teachers, and our staff. We are thrilled to be back to full in-person learning. We know that in-person learning is what is best, and we cannot wait to begin the school year with our students. A huge shout out to buildings and grounds and our school safety teams. We cannot thank you enough for getting our buildings ready for us and our students. We know how hard you have been working to get things ready for all of us. Also, shout out to our office staff who are no doubt stuffing envelopes with all kinds of information, getting ready for our many back-to-school orientations coming up over the next few weeks. Our teachers have been working long hours to get ready for the school year, and we want to be fully in person for the entire twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Parents, students, staff, and the greater District Ninety Seven community, please continue to follow the CDC, the I D P H, and the Oak Park Public Health Department guidelines and mitigation so we can remain fully open for the entire school year. Classroom learning, our clubs, and our sports are ready to go, and we cannot fathom going back to a virtual setting. So again, please continue to be diligent so we can continue the wonderful in-person learning and instruction we have planned for our students. We cannot wait to get started this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry and Hannah. Thank you for joining our panelists. And Dr. Chapo is here. If we have any questions, we're going to present our back-to-school plan. If anyone has any questions or she would like to add anything to the conversation, we will certainly refer to Dr. Chapo after we're completed our back-to-school presentation. Before we begin tonight's presentation, I wanted to acknowledge the work and support of each individual board member and staff in providing their perspectives, feedbacks, and most importantly, their support for what has been an incredibly challenging seventeen months. With the last six weeks being especially challenging. Throughout this pandemic, we also have experienced varying individual perspectives at the board, staff, parent, and community levels. This has been true throughout this pandemic. We have spent the last six weeks reviewing and analyzing the constantly changing guidance within our local context to determine how best to navigate what was feasible and appropriate for our students. Our staff planning committee met multiple times and with each change, continue to think about how to best serve our students. This past week, we presented our plans to the families, a plan that is in compliance with the current state executive order. In the end, we've all come together. We're very excited, as Larry stated, on August twenty-fifth to provide our full in-person learning experience. We're excited to see all of our students and staff again. In response to the CDC and the I D P H guidance, District Ninety Seven has developed a back-to-school plan designed, and we kept this in mind to keep our students and staff healthy and safe while they learn in person five days a week. Our approach implements data-informed response, measures that are aligned with the most up-to-date scientific research and best practices for K twelve. This plan reflects rising concerns about the surge of the Delta variant and the resurgence of cases locally and nationwide. Per the CDC and I D P H guidelines, decisions regarding the management of possible COVID nineteen cases, contact tracing, and quarantine were made at the direction of the Oak Park Department of Public Health. The core safety mitigations that were recommended from I D P H and CDC were masking, physical distancing, weekly PCR testing. Most importantly, too, is staying home when you are sick. We are definitely going to stress that. Ventilation, cleaning and disinfection, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, contact tracing, quarantines, and encouraging vaccination. Well, although our plan was aligned with Governor Pritzker when he announced that the mask will be required for students, teachers, and staff at all pre-K twelve grade through twelfth grade schools. This new measure is part of the state's ongoing effort to combat a new surge as the Delta variant rapidly spreads. Additionally, the Oak Park Department of Public Health issued a public order on August fifth requiring face masks to be worn indoors in common and shared spaces by all individuals regardless of their vaccination status. Masks are also recommended outdoors if individuals are unable to maintain at least six weeks between themselves and the people outside their households. The announcement from the governor and the village of Oak Park are in line with our health and safety measures adopted by District Ninety Seven and the back-to-school plan. We will continue to monitor the situation, update the community on any changes or developments. So for indoor, District Ninety Seven will begin the school year with mandatory universal indoor masking for all students and staff regardless of their vaccination status. Because we cannot guarantee consistent physical distancing outside, masks will be required for all students and staff during arrival, dismissal, and recess. However, there will be some designated zones for staff and students to take socially distanced mask breaks. Per the CDC and I D P H, all students who ride a bus must wear a mask at all times. This includes transportation, you know, to and from school, or any activities that are related to the school. And we have physical distancing.
Based on studies from the last school year, the CDC recommends that schools maintain at least three feet of physical distance between the students within the classrooms, combined with indoor mask wearing to reduce transmission risk. District Ninety Seven will make every effort to maintain as much distance as possible between the students, being at least three feet, understanding that classroom configuration, capacity, and class size may vary. We will also be quarantining in our schools as much as possible. However, starting this year, students will be permitted to travel to specials classrooms. Students will be allowed to participate in small group instruction and/or instruction in resource classrooms, still following the physical distancing guideline. Next slide.
Screening tests for COVID nineteen can support in-person learning by identifying infected persons who are asymptomatic and without known or suspected. and without known or suspected exposure to COVID-19. Screening tests are performed to identify persons who may be contagious so that measures can be taken to prevent further transmission. Excuse me. As a preventative measure and an additional layer of mitigation, District 97 will partner with Shield Illinois to provide weekly PCR testing to all students, PK through eighth grade during the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The Shield test is a non-invasive saliva test that will be conducted on-site during the school day. Results will be available to parents and guardians in District 97 within twenty-four hours. Next slide, please. Given concerns about the Delta variant and the fact that the majority of our students are not yet eligible for COVID-19 vaccine as of August twenty twenty-one, the Shield program will provide an additional layer of protection for our schools by helping the district promptly identify and isolate positive cases. The program will also provide reassurance for families at no cost. Testing will be covered by the state of Illinois and will be completed during school hours, meaning no appointments are required. Participation in Shield testing is not mandatory. Families would need to opt out, but the program could be expanded in response to school outbreaks. By not opting out of the testing program as described, consent for students to be tested for COVID-19 infection is presumed. Next slide, please. On this slide is just a couple of notes about the Shield testing based on some frequently asked questions. The saliva test has a sensitivity of ninety-seven percent and a specificity of ninety-nine point eight percent to ninety-nine point nine percent, yielding very few positive results. High specificity combined with frequent testing makes the Shield saliva-based test extremely accurate. To clarify, high specificity means there are less false positives. In addition, all positive samples are retested using the originally collected sample to further reduce the chance of false positives. Families can opt into or out of the testing at any time. And participation in Shield does not exclude unvaccinated students from quarantine requirements should they be identified as a close contact or test positive for COVID-19. Next slide.
In just the last few days, ISB and IDPH released another guidance document to help schools prepare for the upcoming year. Based on this guidance, as well as input from our local health department and school staff, we have decided to discontinue use of our daily health screenings for students and staff. According to ISB and IDPH, both the CDC operational guidance for K-12 schools and this joint guidance no longer recommend fever and symptom screening by school staff upon arrival at school. Instead, self-screening for COVID-19-like symptoms, as well as any other symptoms of common respiratory viruses and ailments prior to arriving on school grounds or boarding school transportation continues to be recommended. Next slide, please. District 97 will continue to encourage staff and students to stay home when they are sick. This is a critical mitigation strategy to keep COVID-19 infections out of our schools. Symptoms of COVID-19 are included on our slide and will be shared frequently in district and school communication. Next slide, please.
District 97 will continue to follow industry standards for indoor air quality and will remain diligent with regular and preventive maintenance to ensure that all systems are performing at optimal levels. Outdoor air will continue to be circulated as much as possible and outside, as outside conditions allow. Certain activities, including recess and snack breaks, may take place outdoors when possible. The District 97 custodians and Buildings and Ground staff are trained and ready to do their part to keep all of our buildings safe and clean. In addition to performing the regular cleaning protocols, staff will disinfect high-touch surfaces daily. The full classroom disinfection process and along with the deep clean will be performed weekly in accordance with CDC's recommendations. Students and staff will practice hand washing and respiratory etiquette, covering coughs and sneezes to keep from getting and spreading infectious illnesses, including COVID-19. Schools will monitor and reinforce these behaviors and provide adequate handwashing supplies, including hand soap and hand sanitizer. And staff will assist students with hand washing at several points in the day. Next slide.
I think he's muted.
No, there we go. On identifying close contacts and determining who is to be quarantined and for how long, what is new in twenty-one, twenty-two is a close contact definition. For teachers and staff and adults in the indoor K-12 classroom setting, CDC defines a close contact as an individual not fully vaccinated against COVID-19 who was within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four-hour period. According to the new CDC guidance, close contact definition, classroom students who were within three to six feet of the infected student are not treated as close contacts as long as both students were engaged in consistent and correct use of a well-fitting mask and the school has implemented other prevention strategies. Close contact definition for lunch will remain at six feet because students will be unmasked while eating. Also new in the quarantine requirements in twenty-one, twenty-two is per the Oak Park Department of Public Health, those who have been exposed to someone with COVID-19 or who test positive for COVID-19 must quarantine or isolate from school for a period of ten to fourteen days. For fully vaccinated individuals who remain asymptomatic and those with documented COVID-19 infection within the past ninety days are excluded from quarantine. However, individuals who are identified as a close contact and are vaccinated must remain out of school if presenting symptoms. All individuals will be required to submit proof of COVID-19 vaccination to the school nurse in order to avoid quarantine after being identified as a close contact. And in compliance with ISB regulations, the Illinois State Board of Education, any student under quarantine order by the state or local health department will be provided remote instruction to ensure continuity of education. Quarantine procedures for returning to school from quarantine for the local health department. An individual may end quarantine after day ten if no symptoms of COVID-19 developed during daily monitoring and they participate in COVID-19 testing and receive negative results on days eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. And for Binax Now, to assist families with completing this requirement, District 97 is currently planning to provide and administer Binax Now rapid antigen testing to all students returning from the ten-day quarantine at no cost to families. This is a nasal swab test that can be administered by our District 97 school nurses at each school building. Parents must sign a consent form for their child to receive the Binax Now test. For travel advisory and no quarantine mandates, District 97 will continue to follow the guidance of the Oak Park Department of Public Health regarding travel restrictions and quarantine requirements. As of the issuance of this plan, the Village of Oak Park adopted the travel advisory issued by the City of Chicago and the Cook County Department of Public Health. This guidance is subject to change based on the level of community transmission. The advisory contains recommendations for domestic travel. Quarantines are not mandated at this time, but should there be any substantial changes that would impact schools, such as mandatory travel quarantines, we will communicate that information to families. At this time, students who participate in optional quarantines after travel will not qualify for remote learning per the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines.
So as we return to full in-person learning, ISB regulations limit the provision of remote learning to only those students placed in quarantine by the state or in our case, the local health department. So a student may be placed in quarantine or receive remote learning for a period of ten to fourteen calendar days as we outlined above, if they test positive for COVID-19 or have been identified as a close contact. Students who are sick or absent for reasons unrelated to confirmed or probable COVID-19 cases as determined by our local health department will not be permitted to participate in remote learning.
And then some general information. So students who need to temporarily quarantine would receive that virtual instruction directly from a building-specific substitute. We talked about that earlier with Kathy and Tim sharing on those permanent subs and being allocated and by based, by building. Students participating in the remote learning, those days when they're in quarantine will not be counted as absences. Teachers will provide lesson plans to the permanent remote learning substitute and student work assigned through their grade-specific LMS. So specifically, K-2 will use CSOL, three-four-five will use Google Classroom, and then Canvas would be used in the middle school. Students would have a Zoom link to attend with the permanent remote learning sub every quarantine school day for that instruction and/or support. Student classroom teachers will collaborate with the permanent remote learning substitute. They will also then review and grade student work and test that may be assigned during that quarantine period. And then principals will meet and so meet with and support the permanent remote learning substitutes at the buildings.
So following IDPH and CDC guidelines, District 97 will continue to monitor community transmission rates and vaccine coverage for Oak Park on a weekly basis to determine the level of layered mitigation measures needed to safely continue in-person learning. We'll also continue to monitor positive cases at each of our ten schools as well as our district office. So I just included the data sources here. Every week, we look at the Village of Oak Parks COVID-19 status report, which currently comes out every Wednesday. As of last Wednesday, the village had a substantial level of transmission, which spurred the mask mandate that was mentioned earlier. So we're continuing to look at that. The COVID-19 data tracker by county has information about suburban Cook County and then our district dashboard is updated every Friday with the total number of reported cases in our schools as well as the number of students and staff in quarantine. Next slide. In terms of notification of positive cases, we are going to continue our practices from the spring of twenty twenty-one. So that means that school principals will continue to provide notification to staff and families in the affected classroom when a positive case is identified. Information will also be shared again on our district dashboard every Friday. That's updated each week at five o'clock. So our nurses are responsible for updating that information for each of our school and we report out school-by-school data. And next slide. In terms of next steps, our principals this week are going to begin communicating school-level plans that includes details about lunch, recess, arrival, dismissal, things like that. Our district is going to send out communication likely tomorrow to our staff and families regarding what we shared earlier today about discontinuing the use of Crisis Go. We're currently developing a process for collecting proof of vaccination from students. As we shared, we'll need that information to verify that vaccinated students are exempt from quarantine. So that will be important. And then we will continue monitoring our COVID-19 metrics and all the latest guidance for schools, which is continuing to change frequently.
This time, do we have any questions? I know Dr. Chapo has joined us as well. If you would like to ask her any questions, we're open to questions.
So I do have one quick question. When you're talking about travel, you mentioned domestic travel. I was wondering where people would find information about international travel, any rules related to that?
Would you like to answer that, Dr. Chapo?
Yes. If there comes any travel restrictions at the international level, then we would include those on the health promise website.
So I had a question about the testing practices and just kind of using, just use an example. First of all, I think we're getting a lot of concern because when you test positive or you're in close contact, you're out of school for a significant period of time. A lot happens, especially it's tough for kids to catch up. So and even with remote learning. So, I mean, using kind of an extreme scenario where a kid gets exposed on like a Wednesday and they don't, they test negative on a Friday, they're in class the whole next week until the next Friday, they test positive. And at that point, they have to be out for fourteen days when frankly, I mean, unfortunately, they were in the class for a week, but their course of their contagious state is really down to a matter of a few days. Is there, I mean, I'm curious about why we wouldn't recognize that the timing of the test, the timing of exposure, the timing of being contagious, to make sure that we don't over-keep kids out of class? Why we are not providing some sort of test-in option? This would also include close contact. I mean, there's kids that are in close contact but tested negative. I mean, ten days seems like an excessive amount of time and I'm concerned about kids being out of the classroom and not having COVID.
Dr. Chapo?
Yes. Can you explain the extreme example again? I'm not sure I followed.
I'm just thinking because the testing is just one day a week. Your, a kid could test negative on Thursday and the next Thursday they test positive, but it's actually the end of the time that they would be contagious. Like it's actually day nine out of day fourteen that you would normally, I mean, it's unfortunate it was missed on that Thursday, but if they test positive on the following Thursday and they start testing negative right away by Monday, if just a few days later, they'll be kept out of school even though they don't, they no longer are testing positive. And that's confusing to me. The timing of the test is just once a week and you just don't know where in the cycle you've caught a kid that was positive or with the close contact.
Okay, yes. So I'm, I'm assuming that this is about asymptomatic child because
Oh, yes, for sure.
Child would be caught because of their symptoms and tested with a symptomatic, for a symptomatic case versus the screening test. So we're talking about a screening test, a child is asymptomatic and they are caught on, you know, further into their course of illness. One, there would be no way to know if that was the case or not. And then two, it would be, you don't just start testing negative after your ten days of symptoms. The test will capture the virus and the virus can live longer than you are infectious. So there's no test to test for if you're infectious. The test just tests for the presence of the virus.
So what if you get, okay, this quarantine on a Thursday and by Saturday they're negative and Sunday they're negative and Monday they're negative, but that's just day two, three, and four of their quarantine?
That wouldn't happen if the, I mean, the virus would still be in them. So people have tested positive up to three months after having the initial positive test because the virus is still there. It's just not infectious. And there's nothing to test for if you're infectious. So you wouldn't, if you have the virus at day sixteen, you would still test positive. You just wouldn't be infectious.
But aren't we testing kids on day ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, so why can't we start, why can't we start letting them test in on day four, five, and six?
Because the, so the likelihood of, okay, those are two different, those are two different cases. So we're testing days eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen for close contacts. These are people who have been a close contact to a case but are not a case themselves and we're checking to see if they are a case. Somewhere between, somewhere up to twelve percent of people will test positive in that last four-day span. And so we're testing to try and cap, capture those people so that they don't then become a case and then spread without us knowing. But that is different than if you're already a case and you've isolated for your ten days.
So, but the same scenario could apply and I hear what you're saying and I appreciate the approach and to keep the community safe. I guess if you're a close contact, though, couldn't we start that testing back in before day ten?
Yes, theoretically we could, but the risk to people is higher the closer in you go. So we chose day ten because it's only a twelve percent chance that people would be in school and infectious. If we choose day seven, we're going to be up to a forty percent chance that a person would be in school and infectious. So if we chose day three, we'd have even a higher percentage. So So what we tried to do was come up with a shorter amount of quarantine that would also have the least. Impact on the rest of the children in the classroom.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused. If they test in on day six, wouldn't they test negative? We wouldn't let them in the classroom. On a close contact.
So you can test, okay. With a close contact, you, you can get the virus anytime between. Day two to 14 of exposure. And so every, your, your greatest risk of getting it, or you're most likely to test positive. Within that first nine days. And then after that, the likelihood of you testing positive decreases each day. And so if you test on day six and you're a close contact, that doesn't mean that you won't get the virus on day seven or on day eight. And it doesn't mean that, and so if, so let's say we chose day six. The student comes back, we test them day seven and day eight, day eight, they are now positive. Now we have to go back and quarantine the children that they were in contact with from day six and day seven. The other issue is that the likelihood that that will happen is about 40%. Versus if we do it at day 11, when the likelihood that that will happen is only 11%. Or 12%. So that's why we're doing it on the tell-in when a percentage that they will test positive in those last few days is lower. Versus doing it in the middle of the course of their latency period where they could test positive. All those other days throughout.
Thank you.
One of the questions that we've been presented with Dr. Chaplin, I know we spoke about this earlier is. Parents are asking that if their child tests positive. And then the two days later, they went to take a PCR test on their own and they tested negative. What's your thoughts on that?
So, one of the things about the shield test is that it is. Highly sensitive and highly specific, which means that we're going to have a low rate of false positives. Which I think was the concern of that parent, the, the likelihood of a false positive. So, but not just that. With the shield test, even though they have a small likelihood of false positives, they retest all of their positives to make sure that they're positive. And so that sample is already getting tested twice. That would be basically the same thing that the, that was an option last year where if you test positive with binax, you can go then and get a PCR. So you're testing the person twice versus the samples getting tested twice. So with that happening, the rate of false positives is extremely low because it's, the sample is being tested twice already. The other thing is that the shield test has a higher sensitivity and specificity than PCR tests that we are currently. That are currently out here. And so you wouldn't want to retest a person with a test that's less sensitive and less specific than the first test that they took.
Thank you.
Because numbers have been thrown around, is there any. Percentage of false positives available for the shield testing?
Yes, I think the percentage of false positive with shield test was about 1%.
And does that go down because they're twice testing or is that just with the testing at twice? It's at 1%?
No, it's 1% and then it's tested twice. So it goes down again.
Does that mean it's, the second time is 1% of 1%?
Yes, I was about to say that.
Yeah, I think it gets even, I think it gets even more specific. You know, the numbers I've seen, which I just presented are 99.8% to 99.9%. So you're really, really talking about a fraction of a fraction of a percentage.
Okay, that's really helpful. Be, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think those, that's the numbers after it's tested twice is the. The fraction of a percentage point.
Great. That's, that's really helpful because I know 99%. Seems highly reliable, but when you multiply it times 5,800 students. You then think, oh, well, we're going to have 58 students false positive every week. Which is actually pretty significant for the district, but if it's 99.9%, we're talking about a number of students you could count on one hand. A quick follow-up question to that, Dr. Chapo, your comment about PCR being less reliable makes sense to me. Are there any testing options out there where you could actually? A family who thinks their student may have falsely positive. I just made that a verb. I don't think it is. But anyway. Passed it as a false positive. Is there any reliable way for a family to establish that that was a false positive in your opinion?
I don't think so. In terms of like ranking the test, it would be the antigen test, the PCR test, the shield test. And so we're choosing the best option that we have already. And so I don't, I don't, at this time, there's no test that I can think of that's going to be more reliable than the ones that we're currently doing.
Great, thanks. I have one other non-testing related question, which is that in the plan, we talked about. Close contact definition being different if students are wearing well-fitting masks. And I wonder, I, I would be interested in the, in the administration's thoughts on how we ensure that students. Are wearing effective and well-fitting masks.
Well, we spoke to our principals because actually Dr. Chapo presented that question to us as well. And they said that in the beginning, they're going to definitely talk to the students about the appropriate way to wear a mask. I asked them if there was any situations last year that they were concerned about that that was the case. And they said, no, there wasn't. And they're very cognizant of, of students wearing masks. And I think it's important for them to definitely, we need to teach the mask wearing again. And we're going to keep emphasizing it. But according to our principals, they really didn't see any problem with that, even in our primary.
I'm a little surprised by that just because I drop off and pick up my kids and you see, I've done this, like. You buy different sized masks and maybe one fits my 10-year-old well and another one doesn't or. Like you have to figure out the three ply versus two ply and all that kind of stuff. And I think the notion, maybe the kids aren't taking them off resonates with me. But the notion that nobody saw a kid wearing one that didn't fit well seems a little. Less likely to me. And, and I guess what I'm wondering is. If it's something at a minimum, maybe we can keep an eye on it and if there's a role for us to play in making sure that people have access to. Adjustable masks, masks that can be made to be well-fitting, et cetera. Given how important it is to getting through this school year in a healthy way, I would be in favor of us figuring that out.
And Jeannie, I think we were, we did discuss providing masks if there is a mask that a child is wearing that is too big. We're really going to put this at the forefront. I totally agree with you. We all do. This is really, really important and we've stressed that with the administration as well. And we're, we're going to address it as each situation comes along, but Jeannie, did you, you have masks at each building, I understand?
I do. And today we sent out an additional 100 adult masks and 100 child-sized masks. To the schools that they'll receive tomorrow morning in case anyone doesn't have one or it's ill-fitting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Chapo, is there anything you would like to add to share with us?
No.
Okay. Well, we thank you for your time. We very much appreciate it and Hannah and Larry as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.
Yes, thank you. So good evening, everyone. During our last board meeting, we received questions around the district's sex education curriculum resource. And we just wanted to take a moment to provide you with that update. And kind of nested within that, we also wanted to share a comprehensive curriculum resource update to provide a little context. Next slide. As always, we nest everything we do within our district vision to create a positive learning environment for all District 97 students that is equitable. Inclusive and focused on the whole child. Next slide. In addition, this work aligns with pillar one of the district vision plan to ensure that all students have equitable access to rigorous responsive instruction. Next slide. And in achieving that goal, I have the absolute pleasure of introducing our team. So Dr. Twanda Lawrence, our senior director of curriculum instruction assessments here. Jennifer Logan, our elementary curriculum specialist is here. And Corina Proudie, I believe our middle school curriculum specialist is also here. Next slide. And we are super excited to share our priorities for the upcoming school year. Next slide. So we all know that we've experienced and will continue to experience a school year like none other. So when I'm reflecting on our next steps, we just have to acknowledge that 70% of the last two years have been spent in the midst of a pandemic. So in thinking about our priorities, we really wanted to focus on what we believe will support teachers and principals in accelerating learning. We want to ensure that teachers have the tools to support their work by continuing the process of adopting curriculum resources. We also know that a balanced assessment system is critical in understanding how to support all students as they return to in-person learning. And our common assessments place that data closest to the classroom where change happens. And we also want to continue the pilot, to continue to pilot resources that can both strengthen instructional practice as well as increase student engagement. And finally, an area that's near and dear to me personally is to transform the K8 social science curriculum to ensure that all voices and perspectives are reflected. Particularly those of our Black and Brown students. Next slide. So beyond the pandemic, there are a number of factors that led us to these priorities. Next slide. When we look at where we've been, our curriculum resources were largely situated at the elementary schools. And our middle school resources had not been updated. Our IB units were aligned with IB criterion without alignment to the Illinois learning standards. Our common assessments were not yet aligned to our Illinois learning standards. We lacked a framework that would provide multiple avenues for students to access and meaningfully engage with content. And student voice had not been consistently amplified in our practices. So we're currently on a journey to, to shift all of that. So we're on our journey to continue to provide coaching and support for those resources that have already been adopted. We're also focusing on the middle schools and piloting curriculum resources in language and literature, science and world language. Teachers are doing the, the hard work and great work of aligning our IB units and assessments to the Illinois learning standards. We're continuing to build a balanced assessment system and we're also invested in examining the instructional core through the lens of UDL. And culturally responsive teaching. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Dr. Lawrence to talk about what this actually looks like. Next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Lofton. Now that Dr. Lofton has shared our four priorities for the year. I will discuss how these priorities will come alive at our schools and in our classrooms. Next slide, please. Our first priority this year is to continue to assist teachers with implementing the curriculum resources we have adopted district-wide. To support student learning. Core instruction resources for grades K through five include reading, writing, and phonics units of study. And words their way for English Language Arts, Eureka Math for Mathematics. And Foss for Science. In grades six through eight, teachers develop IB units and assessments for all subject areas. In addition to these units and assessments, the design department utilized this project Lead the Way. And the math department implements Connected Mathematics Project Three, known as CMP Three, Discovering Geometry and Discovering Algebra. As we continue to support teachers with implementing these programs, we will provide professional learning opportunities. To build their skill set and increase their knowledge of these resources. Our department will partner with schools to conduct learning walks to reflect on what students are learning, instructional strategies and practices, and student engagement. As we continue to provide support for these programs, we will conduct surveys to gather feedback. From teachers as it relates to what's working and areas of opportunity to inform our next steps and the support needed. This year, the teaching and learning department will continue to collaborate with the middle school math department. To reimagine the math course framework, which will include standard spaced math classes and a transparent process for advancement. We will also redesign the summer math enrichment program to ensure math content and instruction are connected to the experiences students have during the school year. Next slide, please. Our second priority this year is to conduct pilots of resources to strengthen instruction and increase student engagement. This process begins with the resource review cycle. There's a screenshot of this cycle on the slide. Which includes a review for all grades and subject areas. This cycle spans through school year 2028. And incorporates six years of implementing and adaptive program. Before conducting another curriculum review of resources for that subject area, which occurs during year seven. After reviewing resources during the seventh year, we conduct pilots of various resources identified during the resource review in year eight. At the end of the eighth year, we recommend to the Board of Education, resources we would like to consider for adoption. Next slide, please. Resource reviews and pilots consist of a two-year process and require several steps. The teaching and learning department has developed a robust plan that includes teachers and school administrators in the decision-making process. Our goal is to ensure shared ownership and collaboration between the district office and schools. During the resource review year, we collaborate with teachers and administrators to identify those who are interested in participating on the resource review team. After the team is established, the first task is to develop a mission statement. That aligns with the team's broader objectives and outcomes in learn, in student learning that the curriculum resource should produce. A great deal of time is spent during the resource review and is dedicated to the vendor presentations. In which various publishing companies present their resources to the team. The teaching and learning department collaborates with the team to select or develop standards aligned in culturally responsive evaluation tools. That are used to select resources to pilot. We have utilized the culturally responsive curriculum scorecard and the equipped rubric when making pilot selections. During the pilot year, the team implements the program selected during the resource review. We also administer pre and post-assessments for each pilot program to ensure we have adequate data to make an informed decision. Finally, we conduct teacher and student surveys to gather feedback on each program before recommending a resource for adoption. Next slide, please. This year is going to be a very busy year as the teaching and learning department will be conducting pilots in four different subject areas. Grammar for grades three through five, middle school language and literature, middle school science. Plus for grades K through five and middle school Spanish and French. As you can see on this slide, each subject area will be piloting two to three resources next year. Typically, we wouldn't conduct pilots for as many subjects simultaneously. But unfortunately, the pandemic caused us, caused us to delay our pilots for grammar, middle school language, and literature and science. Next slide, please. As we continue to build a balanced assessment system that includes formative, summative, and benchmark assessments. Our third priority this year is to administer common assessments that allow teachers to think critically about student progress. And provide meaningful feedback to students. So in addition to MAP, Ames Web, and various state assessments. We will continue to implement ESGI, reading and math assessments for grades K through two. Units of study, reading and writing, common assessments for grades K through five. Bass for grades K through five, and end of year math assessment for K through five students. And Mastery Connect in ELA, math, science, and social science for grades six through eight. Next slide, please.
And our fourth priority is to transform the social science curriculum with an intentional lens on equity. And we just wrapped an amazing day of professional learning yesterday with the K through five inclusive and anti-racist curriculum committee. That's designing our approach to implementing the learning for justice standards. And in a simultaneous Zoom meeting or Zoom session, our middle school individuals and society's teachers had a learning session with the National Equity Project facilitators. To springboard their work to ensure content is culturally responsive and reflective of minoritized, minoritized voices. And then I'll hand it back to you, Dr. Lawrence, for the sex education.
Thank you, Dr. Lofton. So I'd like to provide a brief update on our sex education program for fifth grade students. Candor Health Education offers our elementary schools two courses. Puberty One, Understanding Changes, and Puberty. Puberty One: Understanding Changes and Puberty Two: Navigating Changes. The Puberty One course is taught through age-appropriate scenarios designed to help students understand puberty. The Puberty Two course provides additional information on both the male and female anatomy. Students explore the concept of respect for themselves and others and topics such as sexual harassment and sexting are explored. Both courses incorporate a blended learning approach in which students engage in self-paced e-learning modules on the six major puberty changes before the course. During the course, students engage in content in whole and small group instruction. There are also various opportunities for students to apply the tools provided. After the course, students receive post-work to continue to apply tools and content learned asynchronously. In the past, schools determined the session most appropriate for their students. However, in response to your feedback, we are proposing that fifth-grade students participate in Puberty One and Puberty Two courses this year as we transition into a resource review of sex education programs for grades five through eight during the 2022-23 school year. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. So we will open the floor to any questions you may have. Thank you.
So I did have one quick question here. Seven years is a long time for a review process and, you know, sometimes you start in with something that you think is going to be good and it suddenly isn't. Is there an opt-out or a breakout point at any point when you're getting feedback from teachers, from students about how a particular curriculum is working?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So six or seven years is an adequate amount of time to give a newly adopted resource time to work. We first start with providing teachers with professional learning so that they are comfortable with implementing the program. And then we have to provide a few years for them to become acclimated to implementing the program. So six to seven years of implementation is an appropriate amount of time to provide that initial professional learning, follow-up coaching, and actually giving it time to work in the classroom.
And I would also add, I think that the front-loading kind of the process, so going through developing a mission statement and making sure that the teachers are key voices in establishing what it is that they want for their classrooms in terms of making sure that standards align, that students are engaged. All of that front-loading work is really meant to ensure that the decisions that we make or that we make in partnership with our teachers and principals are informed by copious amounts of data. And the pilot phase is also critical in making sure that the the resource that we are kind of walking it through, determining if there are any kind of pain points in implementation and making sure that, you know, we support teachers through those.
So thank you for that. So following up with a pilot question, when you talk about pilots, in my head, that is with a smaller subset of classrooms. Is that the case or are you piloting with the full district? Or does that vary?
So it does vary depending on the department. For Langit Lit, we are piloting with the entire sixth, seventh, and eighth grade department. That is also occurring with science, but we are piloting three different resources for science and three different resources for Langit Lit. For FLEX, we are piloting some programs throughout the district, but not all three consistently.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
So you mentioned, I'm sorry, I have one more. You mentioned gathering teacher feedback over the course. I assume also you are gathering, you know, student data as well to be looking at that. And this is an obvious question, but I just want to make sure it's explicit such that you're putting those two together to determine the effectiveness of whether the particular curriculum is actually working. Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I was just going to say that you had to mention the pre-post system, but that's why the balanced assessment system is so critical because it gives us layers and multiple data points. Regardless, and it's kind of curricular resource agnostic, so we're able to see as students progress on standards, what's going on with the only variable being that curricular resource. So I don't know, Tawn, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just step on that, but yes.
That was perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
So this is slightly outside of your presentation, so please forgive me, but we have to sort of reset ourselves because we've been in a pandemic for the last fifteen months. Can you review the overall district assessments that we will be using this year to measure our performance?
Sure. So we are returning to our MAP assessment. So we do look, we are looking to have multiple data points with MAP. And we are also continuing IAR. And in addition, the common assessment, we're returning to BASS. So last year we had Caden, we're flipping back to BASS. We have ESGI in K through two, Mastery Connect six through eight. Our reading unit, reading units of study, unit assessments, and then our K five end-of-year math assessment. Tawn, did I miss anything I feel like I may have?
AIMS Web?
Yes, thank you.
And so just one last question. This level of assessment is in line with the amount of assessing we were doing of our students prior to the pandemic. Yes or no?
So in terms of unit assessments, we should be taking a temperature at the end and beginning of units. ESGI is an add-on. Mastery Connect is an add-on, but it's a part of our common assessment kind of piece that should be happening anyway. We're just standardizing that. So I think the end-of-year K through five math assessment is new. So there is an increase, a slight increase from last year or from typical years.
Okay, thank you. But in saying that, it means that we are going to have a better handle and have more flexibility to meet the needs of our students and teachers in terms of performance. Yes.
Yes. And I think with ESGI, we received a ton of teacher feedback and that was super useful, especially as we're having students who are entering into our classrooms in person for the first time in kindergarten. And also for our K through five end-of-year math assessment, as we were having our vertical articulation conversations, what we were needing to have is a data point that lets the next teacher know where that student landed in terms of our year-long, you know, presentation of standards. So we kind of field-tested all of those things and tried to pick the ones that were the most valuable for teachers to really make informed decisions about instruction.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
One final question. Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Lofton and Dr. Lawrence. We appreciate your presentation this evening. Next up on the agenda is an item 6.3, presentation of the 2021-2022 tentative budget. And I will turn it over to Rob Grossi.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight, we're going to be, I'll be presenting the tentative budget. Keep in mind, this is a tentative budget and it could certainly change before the final budget is approved in September. We're getting information in daily. In fact, today, the Illinois Department of Revenue released a revenue source that we have to update in the budget. So things are changing from now until September. Next slide, please. As far as the budget timetable, in May, on May 18th, we met with Fork to discuss the budget development process and give them a fiscal overview of what's happening in Illinois and a general overview of the district. We discussed the budget, updated the board on the budget development process and the preliminary results from fiscal year 21 on July 13. On August 4th, we again met with Fork to discuss and get feedback from them on the tentative budget that I'm presenting tonight. Tonight, the board's again is reviewing the tentative budget and they called for the September 14th public hearing at a previous agenda item. The tentative budget's going to go on display in the district office tomorrow and the notice of the hearing will be placed in the newspaper tomorrow as well. On September 14th, the board will hold the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting and then later on in the meeting, the board will approve the final budget. Next slide, please. So from the period, the summer of 2020 through the summer of 2022, we've been talking about 10 major decision points that were all interrelated to the district's overall financial condition. And we are currently at the eighth one, which is the adoption of the 22 budget. After this, after this action, we'll be talking about approving the tax levy in December. And then we have the bargaining agreement with the teachers that comes due at the end of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So I want to go over briefly the preliminary results for 2021. Again, these are unaudited and this is cash basis results. So we start, the district started the year with $60.9 million in the bank. Total revenues for the year were $104,762,000. Total expenditures $112,207,000. And the preliminary ending funding balance is $53,515,000. If you exclude the capital projects, which were paid for with bond proceeds from the referendum, total revenues exceeded total expenditures by approximately $7.2 million. That compares favorably to the budgeted surplus of $1.5 million. Next slide, please. Comparing on a line item basis, what happened last year, revenues pretty much fell in line with a couple minor exceptions. Other local revenues were about $440,000 less than budgeted and that's because of a decision made by the Board of Education to waive student fees. So they came in less than we anticipated. But we expected that once we took that action. And then in terms of other revenues, state and federal grants, they came in under budget, but that's because of the timing of the distribution and those funds will be coming in in this current fiscal year. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, we came in considerably under budget and this is pretty normal for school districts during this COVID period. From a financial perspective, it costs less to run a school district virtually than in person. So you could see that we came in about $1.2 million under budget in salaries. We came in $3.6 million under budget in purchase services. The two primary line items for that is, if you recall, we budgeted about $1.4 million for childcare expenses for families in need and we ended up spending only about $400,000. So we came in about a million under budget there. And then our transportation costs were well over $1 million less than budget because we didn't transport students for the entire year. Supplies and materials, they were also down about $1.4 million because of the virtual learning. And capital projects were $9 million under budget, but that's because of the timing of the payment and a lot of those projects are happening this summer and will be paid in this coming fiscal year. Everything else was approximately in line, but partially because of COVID, we ended up about 93, excluding capital, we ended up about 93% of our budgeted expenditures. So the revenue, the revenues and the expenditures combined are the reason why the surplus was better than we anticipated. Next slide, please. So the major goal for developing the budget, and this is kind of embedded in the long-term thoughts and recommendations that we give to the Board of Education, is that since the referendum passed, since the Board of Education made the decision to capture the real estate taxes generated from the TIP expiring, the goal is to continue to incur annual surpluses in order to pay for future capital projects and increase fund balance reserves towards the higher end of the fund balance target. We currently have, which I'll talk about in a moment, we currently have a fund balance target at the board level of three to six months where the fund balance reserves were solidly in the middle. The good news is we're solidly in the middle of that target. But compared to other school districts in Illinois and other school districts comparable to you, most of them have higher fund balance reserves currently than Oak Park, although we have been growing our fund balances. Next slide, please. So this is the chart that plots, that compares the actual fund balances to the target. So the black line is the six-month reserve target and the red line is the three-month reserve target. And I like, and it's rather unique to have a minimum and a maximum, but I think it's, I like it a lot. Essentially, the thought process is that the district starts falling below the three-month target. They need to look at things such as reducing expenditures that go into referendum. And if the district is starting to get above that target, then they look at things such as abating taxes. But you could see that at the end of 2020, which is the last audit, the district essentially was solidly right in the middle of that three-to-six-month reserve. The green part of the bar represented unused dollars from the bond referendum that were earmarked towards capital projects. Next slide, please. Major drivers of the budget in terms of revenues. Next slide, please. The major driver of your district's revenues is is the Consumer Price Index, the rate of inflation. Approximately 80% of your revenues are real estate taxes. And because Oak Park is in Cook County, which is a tax-capped county, the most you can grow your taxes are is the rate of inflation. So when the Board of Education approved the tax levy in December of 2020, the rate of inflation was 2.3%. When the Board of Education approves its tax levy in December of this coming year, the rate of inflation to be used will be 1.4%. Next slide, please. So the only way a school district in a tax-capped county can increase their tax revenues above inflation is either by going to referendum or by having new taxable property in the district because schools are allowed to capture new taxable property above the tax cap levels. So you could see in 2019, the district had $134 million in new property. That's the expiring TIP. So the district was able to capture and experience a significant increase in tax revenues because of the TIP expiration. But if you recall, we also lost money because the TIP was giving us surplus dollars of $2 to $3 million every year. That's gone away. So net-net, we still had, but it wasn't all new money to the school district. But it's important to note that the new number that came out on the tentative budget, excuse me, the tentative tax levy information that we got was that the district had $25 million of new taxable property. So that's going to generate about $1 million more to the district above the CPI levels. So that'll help the revenues in this coming budget. Next slide, please. The other source of revenues in some school districts is the largest source, but it's important to note that evidence-based funding, which is the main source of revenues for school districts that are not property wealthy or school districts that have high percentages of low-income students is evidence-based funding dollars. The state of Illinois has put a significant amount of money, over $1.3 billion more, over $1.2 billion more over the last four years of state money. But you could see that Oak Park gets very little money because of how they are rated, how they are stacked up against other school districts in Illinois. So the importance of this slide is to know that essentially, no matter how much money the state puts into school districts, you will get very little additional money from the state going forward. So good or bad, your school district needs to know that your growth in revenues is basically only going to come from real estate taxes. Next slide, please. Now, there is, there has been a one-time or a unique circumstance that was created by COVID where the federal government has given one-time grants to school districts. So it's important to point out- So it's important to point out that Oak Park will be getting, has received already three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in S R one money. That money was used for masks, sanitizers and technology primarily to, to address specific issues related to COVID. The S R two window just opened up recently and the district will get approximately one point two million dollars. We actually met with cabinet this morning and will be putting together a grant application on distributing that money and that money will be distributed in many different ways, all related to benefiting or addressing the needs caused by COVID. More specific information will be provided at a later date. S R three also will be opening up once the S R two program gets going. And the district will get a little over three million dollars in S R three money. And then there's an S R set aside where the district's going to get a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Within this budget here, we're anticipating that we're going to receive the S R two money. But that will not be a net positive to the school district. It'll be revenue neutral because we have to spend the money before we get reimbursed. So we'll have one point two million dollars of S R two expenses in the budget. We'll have one point two million dollars of S R two revenues in the budget. Next slide, please. Main drivers on the expenditure side, next slide, please. So by the time, for school districts, by the time the Board of Education approves the budget, most of the expenses are already known. In fact, in your district, eighty-eight percent of your total budget is tied to salaries, benefits, debt payments and out-of-district special education. These are all expenses that you basically can't, can't control at this point in time. Sixty-four percent of your expenditures are salaries, fourteen percent employee benefits. So about seventy-eight percent of the budget excluding capital relates to employee salaries and benefits. That's always the highest expenditure item for school districts. You could see the breakdown for the other funds. It's, it's, it's kind of an interesting way to look at it in that the district has about a hundred million dollar budget. So if you look at this pie chart, you could see that about sixty-four million dollars of your budget salaries, about fourteen million dollars of your budget is employee benefits, et cetera. Next slide, please. The staffing plan for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, which is a driver that will affect expenditures. The district is planning on reducing general teaching staff by five based on a decreasing K five enrollment. However, as was discussed at the board previously, the district may have to add back staff depending on trends in enrollment. The district will be adding two math interventionists, two remote special education teachers, two social workers. And they're looking and attempting to hire twenty-six permanent subs to address the sub-teacher crisis and some COVID-specific issues. Next slide, please. In terms of how district staffing sizes up against the evidence-based funding targets, because part of the evidence-based funding program describes from their perspective, what best practices are, including class, class sizes. And you could see that within this budget and within the structure of the school district this year, that class sizes are well within the recommended targets provided or recommended by the state through the evidence-based funding formula. Next slide, please. Other major factors affecting the budget, the first one's very important. Expenses such as transportation and staffing will increase to pre-COVID levels. This will, this will increase base salary expenditures by several million dollars. The district will realize six hundred and seventy-five thousand in new lease payments for technology. The district will reinstate its student fees and technology fees and a new technology fee for K through three students, which will generate four hundred thousand more in local revenues for this budget. The percentage salary increase in the final year of the OPTA contract will be above the currently anticipated growth in revenues. Medical, and the good news, medical insurance premiums will be decreasing for all major insurance types. The district had a good claims year. Non-employee benefit insurances, as we discussed previously, will increase about approximately thirty percent versus the prior year. These are due to, these are due to market conditions such as cyber issues and things of that sort that is, that have raised premiums for all school districts in Illinois and throughout the country. And then finally, just as a note, is that the new software is up and running as of July first. And that will help us significantly to better analyze expenditures in the district and, 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 and give us better information as we prepare for future budgets. Look at equity issues in terms of how money's spent between the buildings and, and several other positive things that will allow us to do better analytics on the financial side of the district. Next slide, please. So the tentative budget for the district for two thousand twenty-two, next slide, please. This is a summary of the budget by fund. Again, we're starting the year on a cash basis with about fifty-three million, five hundred and fifteen thousand. Total revenues are projected to be one hundred and eight million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. Total expenditures, a hundred and nineteen million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand with an ending fund balance of forty-three million, two forty-one. Excluding the major capital projects, which will be using the remaining referendum dollars, is, we're projecting revenues to exceed expenditures by three point seven million dollars, which compares to the seven point two million dollar surplus last year. So again, we're anticipating and the tentative budget shows another surplus. The surplus may change slightly before the final budget is adopted, but fully anticipate a surplus somewhere in that range once it's all said and done. Next slide, please. This is a comparison of the budgeted revenues versus the prior three years. I don't have to spend a lot of time on this one. This, you could see the S R grants, you received three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars last year. And you're, and we're projecting you receive the remainder of S R one and, and, and all of S R two. So it's a total of one billion, four twenty-eight this year. State funding, you could see, evidence-based funding you could see is, is relatively flat. You just get a modest amount of growth. And real estate taxes are going to grow by the CPI number and the extra one million dollars from the new property. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, you could see that there, there is a rather significant jump in expenditures. But, but again, let, so for example, on the salaries in two thousand twenty, they were sixty-one point one million. They, they were only sixty-one point nine million. They were budgeted to be about sixty-three and a half million in two thousand twenty-one. So the, so the growth that you see in twenty-two is just merely the growth of what salary, what's going to happen in salaries had COVID not existed in the previous year. And the same old truth for, for the other items as well. Purchase services are jumping primarily because of transportation costs. And everything else is pretty consistent. So that's a breakdown of the expenditures compared to the prior three years. Next slide, please. So that's, that's, again, that's the summary of the district's tentative budget for the year and the results of the fiscal year that just ended. So with that, I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Gracie. We appreciate your presentation this evening. Moving right along, next up is Agenda Item Seven, Administrative Items. First up is seven point one, Boardroom Video slash Audio Integration.
Thank you very much. Just want to provide a quick update. I know I've been providing that in the Friday updates, also a couple times with the last year. Everything at this point has been ordered. We're just really waiting on kind of the timeline for getting the equipment in and then starting the engineering and install of everything. Again, talked to a couple different vendors that we've worked with. One that did this building, the district office, who engineered, set up all of the audio and everything there. That's who we ended up going with. Talked to another vendor. And based on their feedback, pretty candid feedback, that their price would be higher than what we received from the other because of the additional engineering that they'd have to go through since they didn't do everything from the get-go. And timelines and pricing that the other ones provided were pretty in line. So right now, we're really just waiting for the equipment to come in. I shot an email to the vendor. I know they're swamped. So I didn't hear back to see if there's any, any update to provide tonight, but I will continue to provide that in the board update on Fridays. I'm conservatively, it's, it's hard to say with a lot of the stuff that's been delayed. And sometimes we don't know what's, when that's going to be. We're looking really probably the end of September. Maybe that first meeting in October. Again, I answered a few questions the last time. The setup is going to leverage. And I know people that aren't here, it's like, I mean, we talk with my hands probably too much, but the setup in the border, if you remember, the camera will be for everybody here in the middle of the room facing the board table. So it will be a static one that will cover whoever's at the board table. And I know when we do our presentations, we do those on the back wall. So it would be able to capture everybody that's there. There is Zoom capacity, so if we need to do anything along that. But again, the company's reputable, been great to work with. And they will tie in the audio, everything, the recording, and we would stream live to YouTube through our channel, our district channel. So once we go live, we're out there on YouTube and everything's being projected to any audiences. And then we'll get the recording and post those just like we normally would. Yeah. Any questions? I will add, there was a question about like, can this be used for other purposes? And it can. If we would have like a guest speaker or something that we wanted people to do or presentation or anything, it does provide some opportunity for that, but that's not the antennas for this. And obviously sought that out price-wise, too. You can go pretty, pretty high when you get into some of these things, so.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next up is Agenda Item seven point two, Weeding slash Disposal of Property.
Thank you. The Teaching and Learning Department is presenting three memos to the Board of Education requesting disposal of outdated curriculum. Hatch and Holmes Libraries are requesting the disposal of various books based on content being outdated and in poor condition. And Julian Middle School is requesting the disposal of books that are no longer aligned to the curriculum or in poor condition. Are there any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item Eight, Board Assignments. We'll start with Standing Committees, Agenda Item eight point one. Are there any Standing Board Committee Liaison Reports?
Yes, I have a report for the Fork Committee, which is the Finance Oversight Review Committee. So Fork met last Wednesday, or not, August fourth, I think it was a Wednesday. And Rob presented the proposed budget. He also presented requested information about District Ninety-seven's performance compared to peer districts. And, and shared some other, in terms of teacher salaries, in terms of student to teacher ratios, in terms of percentages of low-income students, and then measuring all of those factors against our school's performance. And out of that were, the Fork had some questions for the board and they were summarized in a memo. So if you would allow me, I'll just go ahead and read the memo. Transparency Policy. Rob Gracie provided Fork an update per peer comparison document prepared by Forecast Five. He will be asking for a different comparison group and new data. There was a little bit of discrepancy about exactly which schools were considered peer groups. Some of the schools that were presented were different than the, the initial schools agreed upon. So just providing that little context. Fork has several questions for the board based on the current comparisons. Venus or Johnson will present those questions to the board at the next meeting. The overall test scores appeared low when compared to pupil teacher ratio, which is high for peer compares, for the peer comparison group, as were the teacher salaries. Those two factors have always been considered to be linked to higher test scores. And that hasn't, that has not happened in this case. What is happening that D ninety-seven is not getting a return on its investment with these two factors reflected in test scores? That's question number one. Question number two is Fork would like to follow how funds are being invested in resources based upon these low test scores in order to better meet the needs of our student population. Third, based on a reduction of low-income students in the population of D ninety-seven, historically speaking, this should have an impact on test scores. Question four, Fork would like additional information on FTEs per school and not just look at salaries per school of staff as presented in the state report card. Fork would like the BOE to consider an alignment of its transparency and equity policy. Prelimarily, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one financial results and tentative school year fiscal, school year twenty-two budget. Rob Gracie made the presentation to Fork on upcoming budget and gave an overview of the district's financial review for fiscal year twenty-one. The committee has no concerns with the findings or the next year's budget. And that's the end of the memo. Are there any questions?
I guess this is more of a reaction than a question, and I appreciate Venus you bringing this and I appreciate Fork asking these questions. I do think that one of the things we've talked about on the board as a priority is getting a better handle on research assessment and data practices in the district and getting a better understanding of how our initiatives and programs are tied to student outcomes. And so I, I think what, what I'm sort of inferring from Fork is that this is a priority for them to. I am a little, a little bit, I'm getting an echo again now. I'm a little bit weary of having like multiple processes or kind of looking at the same thing and taking, asking questions of sort of the same folks. And so I would be in favor of addressing the, what Fork has raised, but addressing it in the broader context of the discussions that we've been having at the board and admin level and, and not sort of just, just episodically responding to specific data questions unless those data questions can be addressed like without a lot of time or energy spent on them. But as I said, I do appreciate the questions being asked and I think they're important questions. I also know that assessment is complex and that looking just at sort of simple correlations doesn't tell the whole story.
I have a question, Ebony, and, and viewing this data. What are your thoughts that you would like to share with us?
So I would probably just want to note that there are a couple of assessment changes. So in SY fifteen, we moved to Park and SY nineteen, you moved to IAR. So contextually, there's just some shifts in the, the testing. But overall, I think it is a data point that we need to pay attention to. And I'd like to think about as we move out of the, this pandemic state, because I think this was probably the last time, I think SY nineteen, that we probably gave IAR in a standardized way. But I'd like to probe with our principals, students, our teachers, this particular data point and kind of how students are experiencing this assessment, how teachers are preparing for the assessment, how principals are supporting the assessment, but also recognizing that it exists within a suite of assessments. So it's one data point that also exists alongside MAP, alongside BASS. And how do those all kind of, those multiple data points tell a story around achievement as a whole? So I think there's just a lot to probe. tell a story around achievement as a whole? So I think there's just a lot to probe. So I don't want to get too deep into hypothesizing kind of the 2015 to 2019 piece. But I definitely want to make sure that this is obviously a call for us to probe the why and to kind of figure out how to support teachers, staff, principals and, and addressing this.
So Ebony, based on that, I have a question. So this was data that was pulled from the state. If we were able to look at, and the, the comparison is peer-school districts. So are we able to look at not just IAR, but also MAP and the other assessments that you named from those peer-school districts so that we have a total apples-and-apples picture?
It depends on what people make publicly available. IAR is the one measure that's available across all school districts. Not everyone publishes their MAP score, so that might be a potential barrier.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't give IAR all of the weight and we're able to look at other data points to have that accurate picture, similar to what you said. But that's the one that everybody has to do and publish.
I think that's a great question, one that we could probe and see if maybe perhaps our peer districts might be willing to share that data with us from a research perspective.
Thank you.
Any other Standing Committee reports? Seeing none. Next up, we have Agenda Item 8.2. Are there any intergovernmental liaison reports from the board? Seeing none. We'll move on to concluding items. Agenda Item 9.1, are there any? Seeing none. Agenda Item 9.2. There is an agenda for the September 14th, 2021 meeting. Are there any comments or questions about that? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Carney?
Yes.
Moore? Absent. Spurlock?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Ross Stribbin?
Yes.
Heard Johnson?
Yes.
Kim? Absent. Motion to adjourn passed at 9:02 PM.
I declare this meeting adjourned at 9:02 PM. Thank you.